I'd like to call to the Policy Committee to order of the National Board of Education. I've got it on.
Okay. Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, we're in the Nashville High School North Boardroom. Mr. Mosher?
Yeah?
Mr. Mosher is joining us by telephone. Are you by yourself tonight, Mr. Mosher?
I am.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
She's joining, you're here, you're present, joining us by telephone. Are you by yourself tonight?
I am.
Okay. Also here is Ms. Raymond, who is making a quorum for us, the Board President also present. We have Dottie Oden and Sue Porter and Ms. Fitzpatrick. And Mr. Guarino is here. Okay? So, I'm going to start on the first item on our agenda, which is Policy EBCB, which is fire safety. We've, I believe we had this go to the full Board and then it bounced back, so Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Yes, I met with Chris LaSard again, and we talked. And one of the things that we added in here after looking it up on Amazon to make sure that we could actually, that it was available, they do sell power strips with cords that are up to 25 feet long. And in terms of how to help teachers that don't have enough outlets, that's a way to do it that's more cost-effective for the district. And so we included that, and we also said it's only to be used for electronic devices such as computers, TVs, printers. So, in talking to Chris, I did confirm that the fire chief's biggest issues with extension cords are for the use of things that wouldn't normally be in a classroom, for example, microwave waves, refrigerators. Chris did make the remark that he was amazed at how many individual refrigerators there are in teachers' classrooms. So, those are the things that he's most concerned about, the fire chief. But we can use power strips. They do sell them with cords. On Amazon, they were $25.99 for 25-foot cords. So we made this change so that we could help teachers, but also stay with the fire code.
Great. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick and Mr. LaSard, for looking into that. I think many teachers and many of us were concerned that we wanted to be fire safe, but also be functional. And I think when our buildings were built, the idea that you would need to plug in 18 things just wasn't around then. So I'm excited to see that. And I did see, I've been doing tours of the schools the last couple of weeks, and I have seen a couple of instances where people were able to get those extremely long corded power strips and then put, I don't know what they are, but they're like a guard over them, and that was very effective for the teachers who were able to do that in the past. But it is pricey. So as we go forward, there might be some budgetary considerations, because I know that our, you know, individual school budgets are tight, and teachers can't be buying these things on their own. It's not.
Oh, I agree. Yeah, I agree. But even for the district doing this versus rewiring old buildings?
Oh, yes.
Agreed. So this is a more cost-effective option.
Agreed.
Ms. Van Twyver, did you have a comment or question?
I do.
Sure.
Okay. Did I hear the Assistant Superintendent say that some people have refrigerators in their classrooms?
That's what was reported to me. I actually haven't seen them. I'm just reporting what was said to me.
Why would they have them? And number two, are they authorized to have these things in their, in their classrooms? I mean, why do some have it and some don't?
As I was doing my tours this week, you know, I would imagine that that would be a discussion with individual principals. I could see a science class needing to use a small refrigerator for certain experiments or whatnot. I don't, or if a particular, say, a teacher has diabetes or something and needs to keep their own medical supplies close at hand, but I don't know why else.
Medical supplies, don't, shouldn't that be kept with a nurse?
Yeah, one would think, but I'm just thinking for someone who is diabetic, for example, might need to keep, like, juice or something readily accessible to them during the day as they are monitoring their sugar.
And I can reiterate with the principals and talk to Dr. McKinney about the elementary principals to remind them that the power cords are supposed to be specifically for devices used in the educational process.
Okay.
Okay. Mr.?
Comment?
Go ahead, Mr. Mosher, and then Ms. Porter.
Yes, I would likely assume that these devices that under ordinary situations would be prohibited may be allowed because of the children needing something for their special, special needs. And for that reason, you may, certain exceptions may be permitted as long as they're, you know, directly plugged in, or that, you know, the maintenance has used these things for that special purpose. So I think that when you find something like that, it's prudent to inquire as to why the device would be permitted.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Porter?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you. This is what I brought up, and I think this is a really good solution, so I appreciate it, and thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Oden?
As a former teacher, often if teachers bring their lunch, there's not enough room in the refrigerator in the teacher's room for everybody's lunch, and I think that's probably how they get started, people trying to keep their lunch cold. So that could be one of the, one of the issues there.
Who paid for these?
For the refrigerators?
Yes.
There's one that the school has, and if people have their own, they bring those.
So the individual teacher paid for their refrigerator?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Okay. So does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding Policy EBCB as presented? Ms. Raymond?
I'd like to make a motion regarding the policy. I move to approve EBCB, fire safety, as presented this evening.
I second it.
Okay. Okay. On the motion to approve Policy EBCB, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
You're welcome.
I think that was a good solution. Yep. Okay. We're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, which is Policy JBAA-R, sexual discrimination, harassment, violence, students, Appendix One.
And this is just something that whenever we have a change in administration, we need to update it. It's, the Title IX coordinators in each building are the principal. And so you'll see that Thomas has been added where Jennifer was, interim was crossed out for Michael Harrington, Gabriel Falsorano was put in for Penachuk. So this is just a list that we need to keep updated for who the current principals are.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding Policy JBAA-R? Ms. Raymond?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve Policy JBAA-R as presented this evening.
I second it.
Okay. On the motion to approve Policy JBAA-R, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Motion carries four to zero. Moving along, our next item is Policy ECA-R, district security procedures. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Yes, this is a minor change that came up when I met with Chris LaSard, and it's because of the volunteer conversation we've been having. And many of the principals had reached out to him specifically about the fact that designated volunteers have been through fingerprinting and criminal background checks. So the folks in the office were having a conflict where the policy says we have to escort everybody, but designated volunteers have already been cleared. So all we did was on the second page, Visitors to School, two, three, four, five, sixth paragraph, we added in designated volunteers as somebody who did not have to be escorted.
Are there any questions or comments? The change is to page two.
Move to accept ECA-R as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Raymond. Okay, on the motion to approve Policy ECA-R, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Motion carries three to zero. Okay, so our next one is going to be Policy IJOC-IJOC, Volunteers.
Yes. Last meeting, we had amended the volunteer policy IJOCR, which is the form that volunteers fill out. Because of FERPA, we removed the child's name, besides the fact that not all volunteers are parents. And you folks had asked to see this policy, and as I was looking at it and reviewing it, I realized that things in terms of our volunteer program have changed significantly. The last two attachments, one is the process that used to be followed for volunteers, and then the other one is a trifold that was informational for volunteers. I spoke with Stacy Hines, who used to be the volunteer coordinator, and when her job was cut to half-time, that part of her job went away. I reached out to the principals, and I heard back from almost all of them. And all of the elementary folks that got back to me said they only have designated volunteers. They don't have just volunteers. However, they do sometimes have parents chaperone field trips, but they're not alone with kids, so it would be like two adults, a teacher and a volunteer with a group of kids, not breaking off into small groups. The designated volunteers in elementary school are used mostly for after-school activities, after-school sports for elementary, and as Ms. Porter said, copy moms, people that will do some clerical work for the district. But I just, I know you wanted to see this, and then when I started researching it a little bit, I realized that a lot has changed. And I wasn't sure how we wanted to proceed with this. I'm more than happy to take it back and work with it, but I didn't want to do anything until I brought it to the committee.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
So were these two attachments included in the policy on the Internet? No.
No.
These are for our reference.
Yes, only for your reference.
So my understanding is we no longer have a volunteer coordinator?
Correct. Each school does it differently.
Okay. And I know that, like, when we do the back-to-school, the meet-and-greet, our PTO at my children's school has the forms there. And I, I've filled out the form, like, in the past to go in and, like, shove books in the library, or be a copy mom, or whatever, on a very limited, as needed, basis. So I know that the elementary schools are saying that right now they're only using designated volunteers, but we are still having the option for these kind of casual volunteering.
As far as I know, that is the case. And I will say that at least two principals I talked to said that the PTO is actually in charge of the volunteer piece. So that would have been your situation.
Yeah, probably. And I know, I'm just thinking of, like, people who might come in and do, like, you know, a mystery reader or something like that. Would they have to fill out the volunteer form?
That's a wonderful question.
Okay.
I think if they're a guest reader and they're in a classroom with the teacher, as long as they're escorted to and back?
Then they're just a visitor.
And they're just a visitor.
Okay.
That would be my perception.
So for clarity, volunteers are people who are not visiting, but actually coming in and providing some sort of work or service?
Correct.
In the, in the school? Okay. So was there anything in this Volunteers IJOC that itself that is out of date? Because as I was reading it, it seemed, it seemed okay.
And I think that the part that I found, I found just a little confusing is that it talks about designated volunteers, and then the rest of it talks about volunteers, and I just wasn't sure if that was clear enough for folks.
Yeah.
That's my only concern, really. And how, what that should look like.
Thank you. Ms. Porter?
Well, if there's only one kind of volunteer, right? Do we have to call them designated volunteers, or are they just volunteers? What does designated mean, then?
Because I'm thinking of, like, my situation. Like, for example, I might go in and do setup for book fair. And that's one day. I'm not coming into contact with students, so I have my, you know, volunteer form that I've filled out. But I didn't have a background check for, I have one for this, but I didn't have a background check for that. And I might not have the ability to volunteer again for a couple of months, and then it may be something where I go in and say, call up the school and say, hey, I have some extra time this week, do you need any help with copying? Or whatever. Now, maybe I'm the only parent in the whole district who does that, but I'd be surprised.
No, you're not.
And so for me, I'm not a designated volunteer because I haven't done a criminal background check, because it's so...
So intermittent.
It's infrequent, and I don't, the volunteer duties that I'm assigned don't have contact with students.
So I think that that would be useful to have in the introduction, to say what the two kinds are.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's a more user-friendly name than designated volunteer.
Right.
You know, just to call them, you know, there are two tiers of, you know...
I almost feel like we have to keep it, though, because it's connected to the policy we just approved.
Right. Okay. So then, so we would need a name for the other kind of volunteer.
Intermittent volunteers, or...
Or something, or, yeah, I don't know what that would be. But, but like, in the, in the introduction, designated volunteer would have a little definition, maybe.
Okay.
A little definition for designated and what the other ones are, so it's really clear.
I can do that.
So then I know, am I a designated or an intermittent, just so I can identify myself?
Or whatever the title might be.
I'll think of something that's, let me think about, I'll pull out the thesaurus.
Okay. Because I just, yeah, I just think that there are other parents who do that, who might come in and, you know, work at a teacher, you know, a teacher appreciation luncheon, and that's it for a while.
I think the benefit, though, of having it really spelled out and well-defined is so that when you're at a school and you're having people come in, you know, oh, you don't need a background check, because you're just, you know what I mean? I think it just would alleviate some confusion.
And then if the committee is okay, although it's not part of the policy, I can work with Stacy, because I'm sure she has the template, to update the trifold that we give to volunteers.
Okay. Although, do we still give out that trifold?
I'm assuming that some schools do, but I don't know, and that's, I asked them, I wanted to get answers from principals, so I asked them two questions. This was not one of the two questions. And people were really good about getting back to me, but I knew if I inundated them with questions, it would be harder for them to have the time to respond. So I will reach out before I do anything with this. I'll reach out to principals and say, do you pass out any kind of tips for volunteers?
Okay.
And this is also tips for teachers working with volunteers, so that's another piece of it.
Yeah, because that's, that's a trifold for teachers.
Yeah, which is not what I thought.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So I will talk to the principals about that as well. But I didn't want to do anything with this until I brought it to the group.
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone else have any comments or, or questions regarding volunteers?
I have a suggestion.
Go ahead, Mr. Mosher.
Yeah, when a volunteer comes in to, you know, provide some help in the office or for a teacher, like, has been discussed, maybe we could call them administrative volunteer.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Van Twyver, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I do not.
Okay. So I think, though, what's going to happen is that Ms. Fitzpatrick is going to rework this and bring it back before the committee.
Yeah, and make it more updated, more relevant, and then as far as the attachments go, I'll look into updating things, but I'll reach out to the principals first. And we do have some volunteers at the secondary level, but really the majority are at the elementary.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we are on our agenda to our last item, which is Policy GIC, Student Behavior Standards.
And I was asked to bring this forward. I made no changes, but I know that folks wanted to look at it and maybe align some of the discipline with, for example, for e-cigarettes and vaping, and align that a little bit more. So that's why I brought it.
Okay. Does anyone, I think Ms. Oden might have some comments on this.
Yes. With all the problems, you know, we've been reading about it across the country, I think vaping, the word vaping, should be in the description, and I believe it should be moved from a Class III to a Class II offense.
Did everybody hear that? Any comments or questions regarding changing GIC to add the word vaping, and then also changing its designation from Class III to Class II? Is that what you said?
Yes.
And it's at the bottom of page four.
Bottom of page four. Okay.
So it should read possession of tobacco products or vaping products. Like, do you know what I mean? Because it's not just nicotine-containing products now.
And/or.
Oh, and/or.
Okay.
Instead of including e-cigarettes.
Okay.
I understand that the number of deaths that have occurred over the past short while has increased to about 15 now, and it's attributed all to vaping.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
So I almost feel like it ought to be a Class I, because the state passed a law this year, and it was signed by the governor outlawing vaping products on school grounds. Now, of course, cigarettes are also outlawed on, you know, illegal to possess on school grounds, but nobody smokes anymore, so it's really the vaping devices. So I wonder if because it's against the law...
We actually do suspend students.
It's, yeah, I know.
Doing that, and I know that it's against the policy, but we take it seriously. So if you moved it to Class I, that would align with how we're responding.
When I, yeah, when I've been visiting the schools and asking about vaping, it sounds like, at the middle school level, it sounds like several of the schools are enacting a couple-day in-school suspension, like, up to three days, I think, and then having them do some sort of education activity.
Right.
So whether it's, you know, writing a paper, or doing some research and verbally reporting on it, but doing some sort of...
Educational piece.
Educational piece, which I just think is fantastic. I hate to see kids out of school, but I like the educational piece of it. But it is serious, and I think we need to let kids know that we're taking it that way.
And I think if you look at Class I, I'm pretty sure it does say, it, suspension is, it says out-of-school suspensions, but also a Class II is in school, but, oh, okay.
Yeah, Class II is up to three days in school, so maybe, maybe I just overlooked that when I was reading it.
No, and actually out-of-school, so Class II would work.
Yep. Sorry, Dottie, you were correct.
You were right, sorry.
No, I think you're, we need the education, and I think maybe if we got some of our administrators in here, I've often thought of a Saturday for students to go to an educational-type forum, if we can get somebody to leave that, maybe Breathe, New Hampshire, I don't know what's out there for grants, but also, I've been told there's a late bus on Wednesdays. Nobody likes to stay later than they have to, that maybe we could use that time for educating kids, having them read something and write something about what they learned. So I think it would be wise to ask some of our administrators come in that are dealing with this and see how they think, what they think is, could be most effective in dealing with this with our students.
So I'm wondering if...
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm wondering if that education piece is policy, or if it's procedure? Like, the policy says up to three days in-school suspension, and then our procedure is, in addition to that, if it's vaping, as opposed to, you know, a tobacco-containing product of some sort, for vaping, we're going to have you have some sort of educational piece.
And just to review, when I did the discipline report, at the high school level, students are required to meet with the counselor who specifically deals with these things. At the middle school level, I think that the, doing a little bit of research and finding out more about it has become common practice. High school's a little bit more challenging, there are high school students. But I think that, and at elementary, that's a whole different ball of wax. That is a lot of education, but also partnering with parents. And I don't think it happens a lot in elementary school, but I'm sure that there's fifth graders out there that experiment.
So...
Think you're right.
Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
I just, thinking on that, it's still, my opinion is it still should be a Class II, even for elementary school. But I don't know if the, if the committee has different thoughts on that.
Does anyone else have any comments on, on this?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Mosher.
Yeah, I agree with the idea of the Class II, but as a, you know, as part of the provision on that, it was, this is a in-school suspension, that part of that suspension be the education class and the harmful side effects of vaping and, and smoking of any kind. So, yeah, I read an article just recently in the, in one of the newspapers that I get, that one of the things that has been going around is where they have these hookers that they, they use to smoke, but this is also a very bad thing, and it should be on the same, same line as the smoking or vaping. But use that time that's in-school suspension as part of an education program and given as a, an assignment, like a homework assignment, to write a, a short story on the, the harmful nature of, of inhaling these substances, and how it can damage the lungs and cause death over time. So I think it's a good idea. I agree with the Class II, with the added, you know, class and the dangers of inhaling these substances.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. That, that makes a lot of sense to me. I would agree. Ms. Van Twyver, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any problem with a Class II.
Okay. Ms. Porter?
Okay, two things. So if we're saying in the first sentence, possession of tobacco and/or...
So if we're saying in the first sentence, possession of tobacco and/or vaping, then the last sentence, tobacco and/or vaping products will be confiscated.
I saw that, too.
And my other thing is just to, I grabbed my wrong folder on the way out, but this is part of the strategic plan, so going forward, just as a long-term kind of goal, we do have a provision in there for a proposed health program for K-12, so that this education becomes embedded in what's being taught to our students from an early age, because, you know, it's, it's good that when a child is vaping, that they get education, but a little bit of prevention might go a long way. So just going forward for board members and for community, this is why, one of the many reasons why a health curriculum, K-12, would be super beneficial, especially where we're going whole child, and we're having social-emotional awareness, so just so you know. So like, this is good for now, but going forward, and the second thing is that there is also a behavior task force, which I would hope they are going to be looking at this, you know, this policy in its entirety, and I brought, it's on my desk at home, I didn't bring it, but there's a full description, I think it's Appendix J, maybe, that has the descriptions of the task forces there, so if anybody's interested to see what the proposals are, they're, they're right there.
And can I just make a comment that we do offer health classes, but not enough?
Yeah, and they don't go to kindergarten.
Correct.
They're not K-12, yet, no, they, right, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, but, no, there are. But I agree, it's not enough.
Right, right. So we want to expand, so that we're keeping current with things that students are being faced with in their everyday life.
Yep.
Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you, Mr. Corino. I am in 100% agreement with Ms. Porter that we ought to go all-in on health classes for our, our kids, because I think, I, I think that it's important to educate them about, you know, how to keep their bodies healthy, that's, that's just important life-skill stuff. The other thing I wanted to propose is, as Mr. Mosher said, and as Ms. Oden said, regarding the education piece, could we, on page three, where it says class two offenses, add, change F to G and add a, a new F, that says something along the lines of, according to the severity of the offense, you know, in parentheses, S, comma, the student may be required to engage in an educational activity?
Okay, so you, you want to make that G, or you're going to move?
I would make it F, because all the other ones end with repeated offenses.
Okay, so?
So I would say F, according to the severity of the offenses, the student may be required to engage in an educational activity.
Yeah.
And then that would.
Are you taking the F out?
I would make F G, and then add a new F. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, I got it, okay.
I would just bump it down one.
Yeah.
Insert it. One more time, according to the severity of?
The offenses.
Okay.
Comma, the student may be required to engage in an educational activity. And I think that would cover kind of our current practice surrounding vaping, but by tossing it in there in class two, it opens the door for, you know, if there's another, if there's like vandalism or something else that falls into there, I don't know.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. So I'm going to try to summarize that we're going to add vaping in.
Do you want to?
Wait. So could we say offense or offenses?
Yeah, offense in parentheses, S.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's consistent with the terminology and the other bullet points.
I apologize. Did you say required to participate in an educational activity?
Sure. I said engage, but I don't care which word we use.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I like engage, because it sounds more active, but.
Okay, I'll put engage, that's fine, I just couldn't remember the word, I have the rest of the sentence.
So, and I, again, that's a proposal for the committee, if people have feedback or wordsmithing, I'm open to that.
So to summarize, we're going to add vaping in, in our matrix of, on page four, and we're going to have it to be a class two instead of class three, and we're expanding our class two offense criteria, or actually the.
Consequences.
Consequences, to include an education and prevention piece to it. Does anyone else have any questions or comments regarding this? And this is going to come back to us for approval. Ms. Oden?
I, I think maybe in this, we ought to let people know that there is a law. I don't, I don't think everybody's aware of what the legislature just passed and conquered.
Nineteen.
And I'm concerned, when will this take effect? Because I'm under the impression that this discipline is already in the handbook, so how are people going to be notified?
When you say people, are you talking to parents, students?
Students and parents, everybody.
Okay. That's a great question. Do you want me to wait until this policy is codified by the board, or?
I, I would say, I mean, you're asking about notifying for the law, right? Not necessar, or our policy change?
Well, both. I, I want people to know it, it's a law now, and I also want to know how students and parents are going to be made aware that it is a level-two policy.
Okay.
And what the consequences will be.
I think we could, I mean, I mean.
Mr. Corino?
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Van Twyver.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Number one, you could reference the law at the bottom of the, of the policy, and number two, you could put a article in the I News, E-News, stating that this has come about, and the policy's been changed, and it will be enforced. Easy as that.
Yeah.
We also have on our website ways that we can just, you know, try, tell people, it's against, we don't even have to worry about our policies, if it's against the law, it's against the law, and we're going to enforce the state law. So without even referencing the policies, you can do that now, if it's against state law.
Okay, I'll speak to Stacy Hines, because she's the person that does I News, and we'll put something together to put in the next edition.
Just to remind parents, and I think that's a great idea, Dottie, remind parents that, you know, there are these things that are against the law, and we have to, we have to abide by the law, and there are going to be consequences if their student breaks the law.
And I, I don't know if the individual middle schools have a news, I know that Elm Street does, but I don't know about the other two, so it could be included in those if the principals are willing to do that.
Ms. Oden?
How, how about morning announcements? Do middle schools and high schools have morning announcements? I know a lot of.
During advisory.
Elementary schools do. That might be a good way, maybe once a week, to remind people.
Well, actually, we need to be reminding Elm Street of how to use sidewalks.
Yeah.
Goodness. That's a conversation.
Right. That's okay.
Okay, so on this, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a question, something else. So as I was reading this again, I'm on page six, one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh item down, so it's referencing the safe school zone as defined in RSA 193. I, I tried to find this out, but I don't know. Is that law, is that still the current law? Did the, did the legislature vote? Did the governor veto something? Like, is that still what the law is?
I can, I can answer that.
Okay, good.
So students are not allowed to possess a wide variety of weapons, up to and including firearms, so that has not changed whatsoever. So RSA 193D1 is still saying that you can't, you can't possess a number of weapons, knives, BB guns, pellet guns, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
But is it still called a safe school zone?
Yeah.
It is.
It's the Federal Safe School Zones Act, and then we have our own safe schools zone in New Hampshire. What was proposed and vetoed by the governor was another, a separate law that would prohibit the public from carrying firearms, because currently, the state law prohibits students, and 193D1 is specifically in regards to students, so it would have, it would have ended up being RSA something else, had it gone into effect.
Okay, I was just checking to see that this was current and still applicable.
Yeah, so unfortunately, that, that one was vetoed, but this is consistent with our weapons policy.
Okay.
Which prohibits students from having any kinds of weapons on school grounds.
Okay.
And I personally feel like even a BB gun in this day and age is scary enough that it warrants a class one, and you could shoot someone's eye out, I mean.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Raymond, you said you had, you had a, a motion, or?
Oh, yes, I wanted to make a motion. So I would like to move to amend policy JIC, as discussed this evening. The first change would be on page three, under class two offenses, to add, in the place of F, according to the severity of the offenses, the student may be required to engage in an educational activity. And then change the existing F to G. And then on page four, to add possession of tobacco products, strike, including e-cigarettes, and replace it with and/or vaping products, either in-school or on-school grounds, and then the last sentence on that paragraph, it should say tobacco and/or vaping products will be confiscated. Also, on page four, the tobacco and/or vaping products possession will be changed to a class two offense for elementary, middle, and high school. And then on page, whatever the last page is, 11, we ought to, we ought to add a legal reference to the law that prevents tobacco and vaping products from being possessed on school grounds.
I will second the motion.
It was a very long motion.
It was a very long motion, so I didn't get it all.
I have it all. Can we just write as amended?
As amended. Does anyone have any comments or question on the motion? Okay. On the motion to amend policy JIC, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Corino votes yes. Motion carries, four to zero. So, so now that we've amended this, you could probably just send it right to the full board.
That's what I was going to ask, if I have it ready for the next packet.
I, I, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I think, if, so the only thing that won't be going forward to the full board at this point is the volunteer JIC.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And I never know how long it's going to take, so I never know how many policies to include.
So, thank you very much for, for that. So we are now at the bottom of our agenda, we have no other, if we have no other business, Ms. Raymond?
Mr. Corino?
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Van Twyver, then Ms. Raymond.
I have a question.
Okay.
For Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
The videographer has been displaying your title as assessment and accountability. Has that changed?
No, it was supposed to be of secondary education, but they, you, sorry.
Did we vote on that change? I feel like we did.
Yeah, you did, you did. So I'm not sure, but no, that has not gone back to assessment and, excuse me, when I was first hired, that was my title, but it was changed to Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, as far as I know, that hasn't changed.
Okay, maybe the videographer will make the correction?
Okay. He said yeah.
Okay, so we have a thumbs up from the videographer.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Van Twyver, that's important.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you, yes, I just had something that was not, not really related to policy, but Ms. Fitzpatrick referenced it earlier, and I think it's timely. We've had a lot of issues with traffic and students at the end of last year and this year, and I just wanted to remind all students and parents to talk to their students about sidewalks and crosswalks, and I know this seems kind of an odd thing to bring up, but we need to teach our children not to cross the road where there isn't a crosswalk, especially if it's like a four or five-lane road. We need to be walking down the sidewalk to the light or the next crosswalk, and then crossing there in a safe manner, instead of trying to walk across several lanes of traffic. I just, I'm so concerned that we're going to have an accident, so, and we can't, we can't have crossing guards on the middle of the street where there's no crosswalk, like that's just not, it's not their job to stop traffic, it's their job to stop traffic on crosswalks. So please review with your children at home, going to the light, pressing the button, and then crossing when the walk sign comes up. That's all.
It gives them that much more time to socialize with their friends, too.
Right.
Okay, so some of the tips that we have for students, no mid-block crossing, use pedestrian signals in crosswalks all the time, don't enter the road, don't step onto the road until all the cars are stopped, and no earbuds or earphones, and also, if you're traveling at night, make sure you don't wear dark clothes at night and walk on the street, and if you are crossing a street, make sure you look at the driver, look at them, and make sure they see you, that's very important. As Ms. Raymond said, we, we did get some reports that some students from Elm Street have been crossing mid-block on Main Street, and there are plenty of signals on Main Street, you can just press the signal button and cross safely. So we don't want any, any accidents unnecessarily, just by crossing five lanes of traffic in the mid-block, that's, that's not, not acceptable, you're going to get hurt, we don't want anyone hurt.
And drivers do need to be aware and follow the posted speed limit, I know we have had some issues with that as well, but we, we all, as a community, need to participate in the safety of our kids.
Agreed.
Right.
So, that's all, that's my little soapbox for this evening. Thank you for indulging me.
No problem. Does anyone else have any, anything for this committee? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Raymond. On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes, indeed.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Corino votes yes, we are adjourned at 7:22. Thank you, Ms. Van Twyver, have a good night. Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
Thank you.
Have a good night.